All right, it's 7:01. Let's get started here. Why don't we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance?
... One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All.
Welcome to the Westwood Planning Board Meeting. My name is David Atkins. I'll be chairing tonight's meeting. And I want to go over some of our procedures so everyone knows how it works. All of our meetings are video recorded by Westwood Media Center. If anyone else wishes to record the meeting, please identify yourself so that the audience is aware. As a friendly reminder, please turn off your cellphone ringers. The meeting will be civil and all people will be treated respectfully. The format of the meeting is that when an item is called, the applicant will come forward to the podium to present their application to the board. The board will proceed to staff comments. Board members will ask questions to the applicant. For public hearing items, the public will be given an opportunity to comment. For items not requiring a public hearing, the opportunity for public comment will be at the discretion of the board. When it is time for the public comment period, the Chair will call those wishing to speak to the podium to use the microphone. And once at the podium, please identify yourself by stating your name and address for the record. Please direct all comments and questions to the Chair. All people will be given the opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be cut short. And just to reiterate, it's very important that people use the microphones so that the video recording picks up your comments. If you speak from the audience, it doesn't get recorded on the video. And to identify yourself and your address. So with that, we should start the meeting. And Abby, do you have any changes to the agenda?
I have one addition to the agenda I put out tonight. The item in red, number five, and it's an administrative item, the Approval Not Required Plan. You received this today. This is for 9 School Street, 291, 295, 277, 283, and 277A Washington Street. This is the west side, school street corner of the Islington Center redevelopment project to create the lots with the CVS, the Blue Heart Tavern, and the municipal lot. So I added that later on the agenda, but that was a new item that was added today.
So you received those plans today?
Yes, we received it earlier today.
Okay. And all right, let's go to the first item on the agenda. It's 200 University Avenue. That is an environmental impact design review public hearing, which was continued from September 5th and September 25th. This is a request for an EIDR for exterior facade renovations and site improvements.
Thank you.
Do we have...
The applicant was not ready. If you could continue that hearing one more time. If you remember from the fall, they were working on some additional improvements to the parking lot and drainage. They have not submitted that yet, so they're expecting that around early December. So I'd request you continue that to a January date. We're just looking at your January schedule now, so I would suggest Tuesday, January 8th. That would be here in this room at the same time. If January 8th works for you. I know, I think Tuesday is New Year's Day, the first, so this would be the second Tuesday in January.
Second Tuesday. Do I have a motion to continue?
I make a motion to continue the hearing to Tuesday, January 8th at 50 Carby Street.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that hearing will be continued to January 8th, 2019, 7:00 PM, here at the Champagne Meeting Room at 50 Carby Street. The second item on the agenda is 736 High Street, the Starbucks property, or 736 High Street Stagecoach Cross EIDR public hearing, which was continued from October 23rd for parking, landscape, and stormwater improvements around the Starbucks property there. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Michael Terry representing the applicant, and with me Jim Soucy, the engineer. We've been going back and forth with Abby a bit. We presented, as you recall, we came back last time. He asked us to do some landscaping, the timbers, et cetera. We also, and then he asked us to add rooftop recharge drainage off the roof. So we did that, submitted a plan. Beta came back with some comments, asked us to make some modifications, which were made, and they reflected on the current plan that you have now. Also added onto the plan was a directional arrow and a change in the way that the two front spaces are marked, just painting essentially the corners of the lots, again by your request. So I think we've pretty much hit everything you've asked us to do at this point. I want to thank you for your cooperation as we've worked our way through this process. The only thing I would say at this point is, first of all, coming into December, it's really not feasible to dig up the parking lot at this point to put in the recharge structures. That's really more of a spring operation. So if we could have some language in the decision, that gives us some time to do that. And then also, we did put up a bicycle rack, and then after we put it up, we realized it was not compliant with your current guidelines. So I'm not sure if that's a huge item or not. If you want us to replace it, we'll do that. But I would just ask you if you would just waive that unless there's some...
He said he's already updated the plan to show the new style. So I'll leave that up to your discretion. Yeah, I think we want to stick with our requirements on that one. It's been a long, we've had a lot of times...
I'm sure you've been pushing that for a long time, yeah. We whiffed on that one, sorry about that.
Are there any other staff comments?
Right, well, Phil did provide a memo to you on Wednesday. And not long before this meeting, this afternoon, you did receive a revised plan what the applicant referred to. So I did print out a small copy that's at your desk, and I have it on the screen, but that shows the outlet in the observation ports that Phil had recommended, and the additional, the arrow at the front of the site with the exit, and the change in the parking lot striping, right? There was, at the last pedestrian bike safety committee, they did discuss this, and along with the public safety officer had recommended that the arrow and exit be added here. And then right now, this is a solid line, so they recommended this be broken up, more common with the parallel spaces to try to keep cars from parking in that drive aisle. So we did receive that today, and as the applicant noted, the bike rack was installed, and it was just, it's not the right style of the bike rack.
Right, I think it's a ribbon.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did have a chance to go back this weekend, and I think the landscaping, it works. It's, nobody's going to park, nobody's going to park there anymore.
Right.
So that's one thing. And so you're talking, we're going to make the two spaces, are those going to be, you said temporary, or how does that work?
Right, did you, I forgot about that. So one of the recommendations for the pedestrian bike safety committee was to have those, the two, in the front, the two parallel spaces to be for short-term parking, either the 10-minute or for takeout parking only. So that's up to you and the applicant, if that would be better.
Yeah, in my view, I think that would be superfluous. Essentially, all these spots are temporary parking, and it's, their business is 90% takeout. People are in and out, in and out. I'm not sure what that would add, really, or who's going to monitor it. But I think with the changes that we've already instituted, we've kind of gotten the desired effect. Maybe down the road, I mean, if there's, if something else comes up in the future and we think it would be helpful, but I don't see it at this point adding anything.
I think, I also observed that it, what people are now doing, they'll just wait. They wait for those spots to open, so if they think they're not, like last, a couple of weeks ago, I saw people like just parking and going, "Yeah." And then this weekend, they were sort of hovering, you know, waiting for someone to leave one of those two spaces so they could legally park there.
We should have like a cellphone parking lot at some remote location, like the airport does.
So we get a major improvement in the drainage, in the treatment of the runoff from the roof.
Right.
Yeah.
Are there any other board comments or questions?
I said, we had discussed before, it came up, a fence on the side, something to prevent folks from parking over at Westwood High, so I didn't know, were bushes put in in that spot? Is that the plan?
I think at this point, we're just going to continue working. We have a good relationship with Dr. Zaka, who's next door, and we're going to continue working with him. And, you know, if it continues to be a problem, I think that's something he and my clients can work on together. I don't know that, you know, an extra bush or fence is necessarily going to be...
No, only because you and, I didn't bring that up. It was either you or...
Yeah, I don't recall who brought it up, but Dr. Zaka was at the last meeting, and we had a discussion with him, and we talked to him afterwards. And I think, I think we can work together without, you know, an additional requirement. We're going to work on that.
And then there was also a sign that was going to mention, where's the sign that says additional parking in back?
I think there's one on the right front corner.
Is there one now?
I think there was one.
I just don't see it on the plan itself.
I think I saw one in front of the landscape area. Let me see if I have a photo of that today.
It was mentioned either putting it on the front door as a note, or if you're facing the building, it's to be put towards the right of that porch.
Yeah, I don't think I took a picture of it. I think, I went out last week, and I saw that the, I think there was a sign that was in front of the landscape area by those two parking spots.
Okay.
Yeah, I watched them for a while, too, and I think I saw that sign.
Right.
I don't know.
That's one, I just wanted to make sure it was on the site.
I don't think we haven't noted it. We don't have it marked, but I believe it is.
That's all I have.
Any other, what about the, Chris, did you have something?
Nope.
Any other, Abby, like what about the timing? He asked about, we could, we don't need it right away, but it's going to be frozen for months, and so I don't know what the, like April 15, something like that, you know, give us enough time to...
Let me look at, check with Phil here. Phil, do you think is May, by May 1st, is that a reasonable timeframe for the installation of the underground drainage, do you think you can do?
Yeah, I mean, once, and there's two things going on. One is the cold weather, the other is the contractors are just backed up, and so they're already booked. And as you can imagine, now with all the construction going on in the area, it's really tough to get anybody. So by the time we got somebody, it'd be really the dead a winner. So, yeah, I think if you give us like May 1, that would give us enough of a head start to get a contractor in there and also be warm enough to do the work.
Okay. So we want to specify that as an additional condition. I had drafted, let's see, a few conditions here, one, two, three, four, and then we'll have a fifth one added for the, when to install the drainage by May 1st. Do you want me to summarize these now?
Yeah, I think you could.
Okay. So in the draft memo that I provided to you, I recommended a condition that the parking lot, the parking lot be restriped as shown on the submitted plans. That's with additional pavement markings and a change to those front parking spaces. Number two, the timber curb shall be replaced as needed. If the timber curb is consistently damaged, the owner shall install a bituminous curb. Number three, the town engineer or Department of Public Works shall be contacted at least 48 hours in advance for inspection during the installation of the subsurface drainage The next one, replace the bicycle rack with the approved type, which would be inverted U, the post-in-loop or the circular bike rack type. And then that the drainage system be installed by May 1st.
All right. Are there, is there anyone, any one from the public who would like to comment? No, seeing no public comment.
Yeah, so I make a motion to approve the site plan submitted for 736 High Street, prepared by United Consultants, as revised and spoken of immediately prior.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close a public hearing on 736 High Street.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The public hearing is closed. Move on to the third item on the agenda, which is 90 Brook Street, which is an earth material movement public hearing, request to import about 700 cubic yards of earth to the backyard. So welcome.
Hello, my name's Monique Allen. I'm from the Garden Continuum, and I actually have a set of the planting plans to offer up. May I? Sorry, I did a copy for each of you. And we have a document for you.
Oh, great, thanks. Okay. All right, thank you.
So the plan that you have on the screen here is the plan that was for the hardscape and the fill, specifically for the EIDR permit. And this property, just in brief summary, from the back of the house to the edge of Willet Pond, it's about 120-foot run, and it drops 15 feet to the water's edge. So the backyard is a relatively difficult backyard to do anything on. And then there's a section of the driveway just to the east of the house, which is at the garage doors. And the asphalt at the garage doors to the asphalt on the far east end of the driveway drops almost two feet. So it's, it's got a real dip in the asphalt. And so basically, the way the stormwater works on this property is it runs from that eastern side all the way down the east edge of the property and through the south into the pond. So the proposal is to start the project at the garage doors, remove the asphalt in that section, and raise the large parking area of the asphalt, about 18 inches, in order to level out the area. And then also to build a retaining wall to, with a large snow catch area, so that we have an area for snow load and we slow the water down in that location. Then as you move to the south, the back of the house, there is an existing patio there, and we're proposing that we remove the existing patio, add a new patio with a set of retaining walls. It's really not much bigger than the patio that's there now. It's just going to be a whole lot prettier and more functional. And in order to do that, we ran into a problem with the fact that there is an old sewer line under there. And so we did have a conversation with, I think it was Richard Barry from the Sewer Department, and he proposed that we put in two 24-inch, I guess they're manholes, and then we would pipe to the two, and we'd put this underneath the patio, and then connect to the sewer line that runs under the driveway. Beyond that, we don't have any schematics drawn beyond what I've drawn for you here, because we'll have to go deeper with him if we get approval for the fill area. Then the large area where you can see the walls, we're proposing to fill, this is where the bulk of the fill material will be. We're building walls that are just shy of four feet around the bulk of the property, except for the area, which is, you can see a little hook on the east side. The neighbor to the right inadvertently built a shed and encroached on my client's property. And so you can see, we're building the wall around the shed in order to accommodate the shed. My client has very generously been working with the neighbor in order to figure out some deal so that he doesn't have to move his shed or his driveway. So that section of wall, in order to make that work, will have to be just shy of six feet, so it will be pushed six feet into the property to align with code, and then it will have a six-foot board fence sort of nestled on top of it to keep that area safe. That whole right side, or east to southeast side of the walls will be built with gravity wall. So these are the big, huge blocks that are set in place with an excavator. They'll pretty much be sight unseen and vegetated so that you just won't really see them. And then as you move around to the south and the west, we'll be building masonry field stone walls, so the patio will be embraced by field stone walls, as will the lawn area, so that all the views from the water will be pretty. And then what I provided for you was a planting plan, because in the comments section of the beta, there was a number of good points about this being in conservation jurisdiction. And so we are in the process of pulling our notice of intent application together. We're going to have that submitted to conservation by the 12th of December, and we have been in regular conversation with Karen Cottrone about this project. And what I've provided with, for you now is the planting plan, so you can see that we're moving ahead with that. And I did have a couple of questions for you, clarifying questions for the comments, but I can wait and stop there and take a breath.
So what's on the eastern wall here? What's the total height? Do you have, is it a six-foot fence and also the stone, or is it a total of...
So on, where the shed is, you mean?
Yes.
So right when you get to the back of the shed where the point is, the wall goes up to six feet in that back area behind the shed, and then it drops back down because the land, you know, the land comes up to meet it. So it's at that point where, I think I've noted, you can see a thin line that goes along there where I'm putting a six-foot board fence on top of the, of the wall. The wall will be from two feet at the very end, and then as it wraps around the shed, it's six feet, and then as it moves and leaves the shed, it's four feet. And you can see that by how the grade lines come in, and I'm happy to approach to show you if you need guidance.
So is it, but that's, is there an addition to the, so at the highest point of that, it'll be six feet. Is there also then a six-foot fence on top of that?
Yes, so that nobody...
So if you're staying on the ground next to the shed, you have 12 feet to the top of the fence.
Yes, but the shed is pretty big, and so it's, it's all behind that shed.
Right, so that's, if it's, I believe it's, if it's over six feet, it does need a special permit from the zoning board of appeals, from the ground below to the top of the fence. So even if it has a fence on top of the wall, it still needs a special permit.
Even if it's away from the wall, so if it's, if it's a wall, and then there's a gap, and then there's the fence, it still needs a permit for sort of that juxtaposition. I have the, I'm going to grab it.
Okay, that might not, okay, if it's not directly on top of it, okay. It's from the grade, so that might be...
So the fence will be on grade, not on the wall?
It will not be on the wall. No, I'm sorry, I moved it away from, so that there'll be a gap in between. It's more so that no one pitches themselves off the six-foot wall.
Okay. So you could stand in front of the fence on top of the...
You could, yes, to maintain the fence, yes.
And the transition going from the driveway, the east side, up into the patio, is that a slope there? Would there be stairs there, or is that...
Can you ask me again?
On the east side, just, just where the wall notches in because of the neighbor's shed, on the other side...
It's a slope. So it goes from roughly 158, which is the raised level of the corner of the asphalt, and it slopes down to 155. So three feet over...
So it's going to slope down into the patio.
Oh, no, are you, are you talking about between the garden bed and the house?
No.
Okay.
If you walked up to here, it might, we could help point you.
Do you want to take the microphone with you?
Oh, yeah.
You just take it.
It doesn't work on the screen.
You can just, just rest it away.
There you go.
Okay. Are you talking about this spot right in here?
Yes.
Okay, that's a slope. It's a, it's a lawn slope. And what happens is, here's driveway, you're going to come flat off of the driveway, and then this slopes down. And what I'm imagining is this is how the lawn care company will come down with lawnmowers and access...
But it slopes down back towards the driveway, or down into the patio?
Yes, so this is, is this sloping down into the lawn, this large lawn area? This is a garden bed. And then this area right in here, there's one step, and it steps into this patio area here, and it steps up into this patio area here, and then there's a set of steps that comes down into the lawn area from the patio.
Is that one big planting area on the...
This is, this is, oh, this here, yes. So the issue we had here is we're really tight to the property line, and it would create a need for a wall that was much too high. So we have a low wall here, and then it steps back, and you'll note in the planting plan that we put an arborvitae hedge there, a thuya placata hedge. And then there's another wall, and so we've terraced that and then filled it with planting in order to revegetate that area, because this is the area, I think some of you visited, this was the area where they lost a really big pine tree, and this whole run right in here is just overrun with bittersweet and multiflora rose and buckthorn, so it's pretty a problem area, so we wanted to re-treat it.
Do you, you don't see an issue with the slope coming into the lawn area from the driveway area?
Right here.
Is it just going to form a river?
It shouldn't, because now what's happening by, because if you look at this, there's a break in the grade. So here's your 158 line, and then it's grading down to get to this lawn area, but then it grades down this way, too. So it breaks. So the area that was really problematic was right outside the driveway, garage, because it went from this 158, 57, and dropped precipitously to 156. So now that'll be up, and you won't have that same issue. And I didn't note, and it's not on this plan, but I know it's on the updated plan, there's a cultech unit that we put in to catch the roofline drainage. So we will not, so right now what happens is the roof leaders come down, they go underneath the patio, and they come out of the wall, and then they just run down the surface. That won't happen anymore. So those two that are running down the slope will now be caught in the fill area.
Okay. Can you just, how much down at the bottom by the, by the water? How much is that being raised up?
Down here?
Yeah.
This isn't being...
The extent of your fill.
Yeah, this isn't being raised at all, so...
By the wall, I mean.
By, right here. So just to help, let's see, this, oh boy, this right here is the 152 presently, this dash line. The bottom of the step is 152, the top of the wall is 155, 5, but it's a sitting wall, so the actual land grade is 154, 5, so it's two feet, about two and a half, two, two feet, two and a half feet, something like that.
That's how much you're filling?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. So where is the majority of the fill? Is it down in the southeast?
Well, I'll tell you, it's more that it's a huge area. So we're not filling anything really, really deep, except the one place where I'll tell you we're filling sort of deeply is right in here in order to support the driveway. So in this area here, we have a wall that's about 311, 310, and all of it's fill, because we also had to fill to raise the driveway up. So really, the most intense area of fill is right in here, and then all of this, it's just that it's such a big area, we actually have to scrape part of this area down and then fill. then fill down in here, and then we have a a good amount of fill just to create this planter bed. But otherwise, it's an area thing.
Of the 700 cubic yards, give or take, how much is going through the driveway fixing?
Uh, I would say, yeah, I would say a quarter to a third is going in here, um and then the rest of it is really just dispersed over a really big area.
All right, Abby, did you describe the route? Are they bringing it in, or are they just, yeah?
It's all coming in.
Yeah, it'll all come in, and because it's a, it's a really narrow road, and it's a really narrow entry, I mean, the great thing about this property is it has one of those big horseshoe driveways, so we can drive in and drive out, uh which will make life really eas- easy. But we're going to be using 10-wheelers, uh because we just have to be able to maneuver. So it'll be a lot of runs with smaller trucks as opposed to a big 18-wheeler coming in with 300 yards all at once. It's gonna have to just be more consistent runs. There was a question about stockpiling. We're really not gonna be stockpiling, we don't have any place really to do any stockpiling here, so the way this project will work is most likely we'll come in, we'll uh demo the patio first, uh the patio will come out, then the sewer, then the asphalt will come out, then the sewer will get done, and then we'll start building, and then we'll just be bringing fill in. So there isn't a whole lot that's gonna go out, other than the asphalt and the uh concrete and rubble from the, actually, we're thinking that some of the rubble from the wall can backfill the new wall, um because that's just stone, natural stone. And I did outline the erosion, there was a question about erosion controls, so they're here, uh and go all around, and they will also have the fence um for concom.
For the the route into this, Oak Street, is that the-
Right, I had um suggested directly from Oak Street, which they could easily get to from the property, um that's the planning board's major review at these kinds of applications is um trying to protect the um public roads, um so just as long as it's not going on some of these other um side streets, so just directly to the property from Oak Street.
So the other place, could it, if they were, if any of the fill was coming from Norwood, it could come from, is it like where St. Nick's is, the circle, and then in that way, too, right? And it would avoid Oak Street?
It's not under Roger's action.
One or the other? Okay, oh, okay, right, 'cause you're, okay. All right, so it's all, okay, got it, got it, okay.
How they get to our roads is-
You don't care, okay, got it, yep.
So if that's a shorter route, that means less roads-
Yeah, it just depends on where we're trucking from, so, and we may truck from one, more than one location.
All right, thank, thank you. Is there any-
I had a couple of quick questions that I just needed help with, um, so on-
Phil had a-
Phil, would you, then it's not a question?
Oh, hi. Oh, you're the one I wanna ask the questions to, maybe, okay. This is really, you answer the questions. Okay, so um on comment one, it was uh provide the order of conditions, so clearly that would happen after the end of my-
So, so just so you know, we got us, we got the set of plans, and I think it was without the design plan initially?
And Phil, could you just identify for the-
Okay, so, uh, yeah, my name is Phil Paritas, uh consultant and town, acting town engineer for the, for the town of Westwood. Uh, we reviewed this plans uh under the guidance of Abby. Uh, so, so I think there was some confusion on our part as to what we were reviewing, and when we did our initial review, um because we downloaded everything at the initial review, we didn't have the design plan. So some of those comments you've already addressed.
Oh, okay.
Obviously, you, you showed me where the sewer was, you showed me, so I think the the outstanding comments that I have are relative to um, so, yeah, so the top six are probably covered. You're obviously gonna need a order of conditions from conservation. The, the issue I had was relative to change in drainage patterns. You know, you said you would um fill this area. When the drain comes down like this now, now you're sending some of it directly toward the abutment.
Well, um, here's the, here's the, the line now, 158, 157, and I'm pulling the 157-
Yeah, but it come, it would come, the drainage would come this way.
This way, yep.
Right now, and right, right now, you're lifting this up, as you said, and and you're gonna send the water that way. So that was, that was our biggest concern in terms of impacts to the abutment.
You don't think it was already going that way a little bit, or no?
It could've been.
Yeah, 'cause it, right now, what it looks like is it falls, so the end of the driveway's right here, and because of the way these lines work, it falls right here and down here. So I guess we could, we could-
I mean, I would just confirm with them.
We could, along the side of the driveway, that's what I was thinking.
Like a swell, yeah.
And we could, we could meet it up, we could actually meet the swell right up on the back of the wall, we could backfill the wall with gravel, so that we can park down and avoid, you know, avoid coming across this way.
Yep.
Okay.
So that was the major issue I had.
I just have a question on number four. It says include the following notes, and I couldn't find for the life of me these-
Yeah, yeah, so, so I think Chris was using an older version of the-
Okay.
Of the uh requirements, and I don't think those are now included in this-
Oh, okay.
In the, in the, the updated version, so-
Okay.
I think the standard um conditions for these type of things will cover most of it.
Okay, so I don't, okay, so I just didn't know if there was something I had it right on the-
Yeah, I thought it was-
Okay, that's good.
Abby, I think my only other concern is just kinda getting back to that, the total height issue. Is that something that the building inspector would, that we would want them to look at? I just don't wanna have any misunderstandings of uh, we thought it was okay and then they-
Right, yes, the building commissioner will uh review this um before it goes forward again. So the retaining wall does need a building permit um for being over four feet, um and then he will, and I'll, I'll point out about the fence. But it, it sounds like if it's pushed back, then it won't require a special permit, but if it's, if it's over six feet um from the, the grade directly below, that's when it triggers a um special permit from the zoning board of appeals.
Okay. And is that something that you just, or do I'm submitting a new?
You would need to, the applicant would need to submit separately to the zoning board, but first, the building commissioner would review it and make that official determination.
And then I would apply?
Yes.
Got it, okay.
And that's, so our, our purpose here is um we can approve with conditions, and we can uh deal with the, where the trucks go and all that stuff.
Right.
And that's, we don't need to wait to hear from the other, the other parts of it will-
Yes, come later. So I did draft um some suggested conditions, I have nine here, and then we have an additional one that we talked about with the drainage during your hearing. If you want me to summarize these, I'm sorry, I didn't get these, I didn't get these to the applicant in advance, but there are standard um conditions. Do you want me to read them now? Okay. Um, so I'd say um the first one that you just talked about would be to revise the plan to um help reduce that runoff onto the abutting property by adding the swell. Um, and then the existing pavement on Brook Street shall be protected from damage from loading and unloading of material um related to the construction. That should be a construction entrance um to prevent the excess um tracking of material to and from the street. The applicant shall clean the site daily to prevent excess fill or dust from impacting the roads or abutting properties. The applicant shall contact the public works at least, um the department at least 48 hours in advance to schedule an inspection during the installation of the recharge chamber. Um, and then the next one, number five, is related to the town's construction hours. Um, so I've listed them out here, um that's 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and then noon to 7:00 PM on Sundays.
Saturday is also-
Oh, through Saturday, okay, Monday through Saturday. And then um the next one, all, all trucks should enter the property from Oak Street. The imported fill material shall not contain any hazardous or substandard material. And number eight is a long one that I'll uh just summarize, and this is that the applicant owner is responsible for filing any other required permit, so this is where the retaining wall, the building department, the filing the notice of intent with the conservation commission. And then um the last one, applicant shall promptly repair any damage the applicant causes to any sidewalks, street paving, signs, or any other items in the right of way.
And then the um, the Oak Street issue, that's, again, we don't have jurisdiction over Norwood, so if you come in through Norwood, that's not our problem. So it doesn't mean that you have to use Oak Street, it just means that you should, you can't use other streets, like, you know, if the truck's holding on Alder and kinda, that kinda thing.
Okay, got it. And I, I did have one question on the, the road, the um, the construction entrance, is that other than the driveway, or?
There's usually like a, a entrance that helps um keep the material on the site, is that right, Phil? Like an, an entrance that will help um keep the material from being, isn't there some kind of a construction entrance, a special material?
They put down, right, so they clean off the wheels as they drive in and drive out.
So something we just drive over, it's still, I'd, okay, okay.
The driveway, doesn't it go right up to the property line, and it's a um horseshoe? So you would just use the-
Use, put it in the driveway.
Okay. And then the other question I had was, I think um I, I took lots of pictures of the road, and there are some areas where it's kinda a little crumbly and pitted, so do I look at that beforehand with the DPW and sort of they assess the state of it with me?
Yeah, or you could take photographs now, and you could submit it to the planning board, so-
I would document the current conditions.
Okay, okay.
We could, you could um take some photographs and document now, and you could send it to me, and I will add it to the planning board's files that we have.
Thank you.
It, it seems to me your client is doing an awful lot to accommodate his neighbor who messed up.
Yes, yes.
Are they only exchanging money or understanding? Because when one goes to sell the house, this is potentially a big problem, if they don't redraw the lot line or something.
Right, right, um, I can't answer that question, um, but I will talk to him, yes.
I mean, one, he's building more wall than he needs to go around it.
Yes.
And he is gonna be liable for half this building, 'cause it's on his property.
Okay.
Should something happen, should a new neighbor move in, you know, and this thing rots because whatever, I don't know, there, I just see a lot of problem potential here.
Okay, thank you, I will definitely bring that up.
So I make a motion to approve the earth material movement EIDR for 90 Brook, or do we need um audience?
Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this?
So I make a motion to approve the earth material movement EIDR for 90 Brook Street with the conditions previously stated.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Motion carries. I believe this is a public hearing, correct? So we need a motion to-
Make a motion to close the hearing for 90 Brook Street?
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you, Phil.
The public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Thanks, good night, Phil.
Abby, I'm, I was noticing um in our previous agenda item, I do not believe that we voted on waivers. So on the um-
Oh, yeah, um, oh, for High Street, you could, you could reopen the hearing and vote on the here, um, build on the waivers, and then close the hearing.
All right, so we can cure that, uh, so I guess-
Make a motion.
Make a motion to open the-
I make a motion to open the hearing for 736 High Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? May reopen the hearing.
So it was six, I think it was six waivers from application submission requirements. Um, this was from the full site plan review, um, the site plan, they did submit a sm- site plan, but this um was a waiver showing all the topography and every detail. A waiver requested for the exterior lighting photometric plan from providing the full traffic study, the full drainage report, renderings, and the presentation model. I had um drafted a finding here. I accidentally turned it off. I had a um, a draft finding here that on those items um aren't necessary for this proposal for the parking and traffic circulation changes, and that the proposed drainage system is a substantial improvement from what's there today.
Is there any discussion? I think these were all things that were waivers because they weren't required for the um, we don't need a model of the parking lot because we can go inspect it in person and um-
They're all reasonable requests. It's not a-
I agree.
I agree.
All right.
Uh, so I make a motion to waive the six application submission requirements of section 737 of the zoning bylaw for the full site plan.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Close it.
I make a motion to close the hearing for 736 High Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? And the hearing is closed again.
Thank you.
I think we're okay in terms of notice and everything, because um although the people left who came for that, I mean, it's, you're still-
Yeah, you did take, um, you opened it up for the opportunity for public comment earlier.
Yes. All right, the next item on our agenda is, I think you have the zoning amendments here, but we should do, we should talk about the A and R first, I think.
Okay.
There's objection, why don't we do that first, before, because the zoning stuff is kinda a long series of things.
Okay. Just pulling it up here. Earlier today, you received an A and R plan for um the west side of Washington Street, that's um 9 School Street and 277th or 291 Washington Street. This um is a result of the April special permit approval for the Islington Center redevelopment project. Um, there was a requirement that they submit um the A and R plan creating these lots before closing for phase one of the project. So this is lot one, creating the CVS lot. Lot two is the municipal lot that includes the relocated library with the addition, the shared parking, and the open space parcel. And lot three is the um Blue Heart Tavern, lot at the front on um Washington Street. Um, so this plan, um, you know, it was received today, so I added it to the agenda. They are, um, if everything comes into place, they're hoping to close on, on this uh tomorrow. Um, so this has um been submitted for your review. It does meet the frontage requirements and is consistent with your special permit approval from the spring.
Any variations from my special permit?
Not that I saw, but it's really, it's creating the lot line, so all it really shows here is the um former, or the current, and the proposed new lot changes, so the combination and reconfiguration of-
So how do we, how does the, how is the frontage requirement met by lot three being 46? Oh, oh, it's exactly 50 feet, and is that what?
I think the frontage is um 40 feet, I think, hold on, let me just check. Local business.
Is that lot owned by the town?
Um, yeah, the minimum frontage is 40 feet.
Okay.
Um, yes, the proposal is, and I did receive um an application that I'm still reviewing for restoration of the um Blue Heart Tavern, um, for that to be um relocated to that um lot three and to be restored by, um, to be restored, and that would be private ownership, so that lot three would um not be the town lot.
And these are all, so there's, there's frontage, and there's vital access, they're all like-
Yeah, so they all have the frontage and- Yeah, so they all have the frontage and access on Washington Street.
Any other, is there any?
I just say, for, for Lot 3, the only, the question I have is the, so we haven't received the plans for, the town hasn't received the plans for the restoration for that.
Um, I did, um, receive, um, them on Wednesday. I was not here on Wednesday, so I haven't yet reviewed them. And then, we were closed for the holiday, so I, I did receive and I still have to review them. Um, so I was going to review them, um, administratively and bring them to you for a compliance review to match, um, to check the special permit from the spring. Um, but I believe, uh, when I talked to the owner before, the plan was to restore, um, the first floor to, um, office and to have a second floor apartment above. But I, I just haven't reviewed them yet.
And at town meeting, was that Lot 3, was that, was that considered town property at that time or is that considered, uh, property that was going to be?
The way, um, the way your special permit, um, findings and, and conditions were reviewed as well as the land disposition agreement, um, read if it were going to be restored and relocated, um, there was options depending on what the proposal was, either, it depend on what it was. So if it was gonna be restored by Petruzziello, then he would maintain ownership. But then there left the option, if he wasn't gonna do it, the town or third party, um, could consider owning that lot. But right now, the plan is for the developer to own that lot.
So, so at the end, so right now, there are existing lot lines, but we're kinda, it's all thrown together because of the land disposition agreement. And then the outcome would be Lot 1 is Petruzziello, Lot 3 is Petruzziello, and Lot 2 is town.
Yeah.
So at the end of this, it just, it solidifies the shape of the spaces so that if the, if phase one happens and phase two doesn't happen or something, I forget which, at what point things shift, but, we, this is what the town ends up with, Lot 2.
Yes, Lot 2, yep. That's the, um, the parking, the library, the, the addition on the community center, and that open space parcel that goes, um, out back there. That was previously part of the tailor shop lot.
My concern is that without seeing what the, the renovate, that Lot 3, whether it's owned, I, I don't remember from town meeting if that was, you talked about different, different situations. My concern is that you, with that spot there, it's right next to the library, so you have municipal buildings. And where does the, what is the, the foundation of the community center library come up against that Lot 3? Is it right up against it?
Does that recall, it's back.
I think it's back, back, this one.
Pushed back, behind it.
Like underneath Lot 2.
These, the, this...
Do you have the plans that you can pull up quick, just so I can look at?
Yes, I can. I think, uh, when you did review it, it did show these lot layouts with, um, Blue Heart Tavern had its own lot out front, but let me see.
If you can just pull it, that'd be great. That's my only reservation.
So...
Oh, cool.
Now, oh, that's existing. Okay. So...
So it's right up against it.
So this shows the Blue Heart Tavern on the slot out front. And then, the, um, this is the municipal lot, that's shown as Lot 2 on this plan, um, runs from the driveway back through the park, shared parking area. And then, um, it goes all the way back to that wooded area and then kinda just out here for the full, um, parking lot. And then goes to the back of the relocated Blue Heart Tavern. And then Lot, uh, Lot 1, is that Lot 1? The CVS one is here, cuts across there to the school street corner.
So either way, the Blue Heart Tavern building needs its own lot.
Right. And that's where it's gonna go regardless of who in the end owns it.
Yeah. If, if the town owns it and wants to sell it, it needs to have its own lot. If the developer develops it, it's privately owned and it needs its own lot.
Yes, it was shown as its own lot and then it was, at the time of your review and at town meeting, it was to be determined who would own it.
And right now, it's moving towards being a privately owned lot.
And this, and this, if you were to lay this over the screen, it is, you know, it's fairly, it's consistent, the same shapes, the same, uh, you know? So that was already, that was approved and so this is the actual details of where the lines go.
This is just the actual where the lines are and it's just to be approved just, you legally.
This plan doesn't show as much detail cause it's the A and R plan that's actually creating the lot line changes. So that doesn't physically happen until this plan, um, is endorsed and recorded at the registry of deeds. That's what actually creates the lots.
So where's the parking for Lot 3 and for the library? It's behind it or is it in front of it?
The shared, it's the shared parking. Um, Lot 3 with the Blue Heart Tavern did not have its own separate parking.
It all goes in the municipal lot.
In the municipal lot.
Or in front on the street.
Yeah, or, right, there's one spot in front of the Blue Heart Tavern on the street and then there's a, a loading area in front. Oh no, that's the bus stop.
Right.
Bus stop.
Do you know if any of the lot, the spots out front would be accessible or they?
Um, there is, I don't think, I don't think so. The, the accessible spots, I think, are shown on, in the site at, um, adjacent to CVS, there are some. And then, the two closest to, um, the municipal building here in the back where the spaces...
There's none closer to the, to Lot 3 or 2 where the entrance to the library will be?
There are those two spots.
Yeah, the first two up on the right.
These, yeah, these two. I think that was, there's gonna be a door on that side of...
So what's the building right ne, right in front of that? Is that the library?
That's the old library.
So this is the library.
Addition.
Okay.
And then this is the addition. So it will be first floor library, um, oh, yeah, so for, the library in the front and then the, um, ground floor is gonna be youth and family services and then the lower level is gonna be shared area, multi-space, multipurpose area.
Is there any, any public comment? Feel free to approach the...
Hi, Fran Fusco, 20 Pine Lane. I think it will be a big problem with the developer owning the Blue Heart Tavern and not having any parking specifically allotted to that building, especially if there's a business on the first floor and an apartment on the second floor. CVS is having, gonna have a problem, um, where they don't want the ballpark, people over at, um, oh, what's it called?
Morrison.
Morrison, parking in their spots. So why would it be okay to have a private developer's, um, tenant, tenants using the municipal parking lot?
Abby, was open parking kind of a condition here throughout the whole project area?
Was supposed to be.
Shared parking, yes, yep.
So CVS doesn't have, I guess, say, it's a condition of them moving in there, they have to accept that there's other people. And so, so if, if someone wants to live above the Blue Heart Tavern, they have to accept the fact that they're gonna have to park back there. If he can find someone who's willing to accept that condition, then he'll rent to them. But if he can't, then he's got an empty unit. But that's the only place that has been allowed for to park for the Blue Heart Tavern. But at the time that this was approved, didn't know if it was gonna be a restaurant, didn't know what it was gonna be.
Well, I knew it wasn't gonna be a restaurant, but, but it's still a problem.
So there are, there are the shared, there's the shared spaces and then CVS does have a number of dedicated, a certain number, right, of like 32 or something that, um...
CVS was wanting to have 40. So they have 40 on their property and then there's 32 spaces that are, um, shown on the town's property. But they're not to be signed separately, they're not supposed to be designated, they're supposed to be shared openly.
So do we have a number for the library and the addition and the Blue Heart Tavern of what that parking would require? How many numbers?
I can't remember the exact number on this side of the street right now, but it was...
We had an exact number.
Yep, the planning board reviewed, um, each of the uses. Um, the total, I remember, was 178 parking spaces when you looked at the whole site. So both sides of the street was 178, um, total and, um, the planning board did review, you know, uh, the Blue Heart Tavern restored there at this location in its concept form and did find that there was adequate parking, um, for the project.
We went over this, we went over it a lot and we had more spaces than we needed.
Yeah, that was the finding and I think...
And like Chris was saying, it's the, it's the where do they, you know, someone can, they just will have to use the parking that's farther away from the lot.
Some of that parking might be in the back of the lot, but the parking is there.
Is the, what, the lot size doesn't come into this A and R discussion though? It's a very tiny, how does a 1,900 square foot lot, uh, work with this?
Oh, um, let's see, that was under the FMUOD special permit, um...
Cause there's, see, that would be, is there's, is there room in this lot parking? No, you know, there's room for a building and that's it, so.
I know that they do a curb cut there anyway. You're parking right in front of it on the street.
Is it also still the condition where the Blue Heart Tavern is being placed, um, on that lot? That it's actually, um, the town has given that piece of property to the developer to develop, uh, redevelop the Blue Heart Tavern? Remember there was talks about that?
That was never finalized. This is all for a closing that's hoping to take place and I believe the town is selling Lot 3 to Mr. Petruzziello.
I haven't heard that. Is Abby?
According to the drawing here, it says, um, so, let's see, I saw. The intent of this plan is to create three lots. Lots 1 and 3 shall be deeded to Petruzziello properties. Lot 2 shall be deeded to the town of Westwood. So this says that that...
Yeah, that was part of the original, um, the, it matches this planning board's special permit, permit from the spring and then also it was outlined in detail, the ownership that was in the, um, land disposition agreement.
And of course, intent, um, I think that the idea now is restore the Blue Heart Tavern. He, it goes on to his property, he needs a lot for it. And I think if that sort of fell through, then the intent might no longer apply and maybe something else happens. But right now, this is the shape, like it's creating a small lot for the Blue Heart Tavern. This for the town, community center and library and this for the CVS and parking lot.
Specific to the Blue Heart Tavern because people wanted to save the Blue Heart Tavern. So this was created specific for the Blue Heart Tavern.
Yes.
Without the Blue Heart Tavern, Lot 3 doesn't exist.
But what is the Blue Heart Tavern even gonna look like? We can't pull that up now?
What's it going to be?
No, I just don't have, I mean, I, I received it, but I just, I was out and I just, I haven't processed it yet.
You don't, there's, there's no rendering of it yet, right? Or is there?
I think I just got the email, um, I did get an email, I haven't gone through, it was on Thanksgiving or something like that and I just didn't read it yet. But I, I had previously asked for, um, rendering showing the restoration. So that's what I believe you receive, we received recently.
But it would be a moot point unless we approve this A and R, there will be no lot to put any Blue Heart Tavern on.
The building.
Right.
There's no place to put it. This is what was approved at town meeting.
So who owns the land?
I personally, I like to receive me, material ahead of time for a meeting. So when I come into a meeting and...
But this has nothing to do with the redevelopment of the Blue Heart Tavern. This is just to do with the drawing of the lot lines.
This information to, to receive it ahead of time so that I can...
Oh, she just, Abby said she just received it today.
Right, I think that, you know, their requirement was to submit an application prior to closing. Had they, you know, nobody's here to, uh, talk to this now.
When's closing?
They're hoping to close tomorrow if everything comes together.
But I don't believe that this approval of this is a condition of closing. I mean, it probably makes it easier, but the requirement was to get the plan to us before closing.
I believe it's a submission of an A and R before closing.
And if we do nothing, 25 days from now, it just, it is deemed to be approved.
A and R plans, um, when they're submitted, the planning board must act within 21 days or they're constructively approved as submitted, without your approval or not. But usually we have a tight timeframe on A and Rs.
So we could continue it to the next, to another meeting before, we have a meeting before then.
Yeah, December 11th.
I mean, it is a little, I mean, I'm, we were reading, we're looking over here and saying, oh yeah, Lot 1 and 3, it's written there, but I just saw it for the first time now too, so it's...
A and R plans aren't usually continued because we don't know what the building's gonna look like. It's, it's a redrawing of property lines.
Right.
Right? That's what we're here to talk about, the, how the Blue Heart is gonna end up looking is not germane to this discussion. This is what they're asking, will we redraw the lines like this to accommodate the overall project? How the blue tart, Blue Heart ends up looking is not part of this discussion. That's later down the road.
Everybody agrees to that.
But I don't know why, I, I think continuing this and not acting on it right now is, we don't have any reason not to act on this now. We have all the information.
So the only question, so Abby, in the disposition agreement, does it say that if the applicant takes over the Blue Heart Tavern, then that is their parcel? Is that what it says in the disposition agreement?
I forget the exact words, but it, it left a number of options, that it could revert back to town if the town ended up restoring it. Um, so we had laid out, um...
So if it doesn't get taken over the town then?
Right, I think it was written so that it would be privately owned either by Petruzziello or another third party if someone else wanted to restore it. And as the last, you know, kinda third option, um, if no one else came forward, that the town could consider...
But just to consider it as an option.
Yeah, cause that wouldn't be...
Westwood does not wanna own the Blue Heart Tavern.
No, no, I understand, I just wanna make sure that...
What about the land on, that the tavern would be on?
They already own the land all around it, it's, it's almost insignificant.
It's, it's useless to anyone else.
Exactly.
I just wanted to make sure that what's stated in the disposition agreement is consistent with this.
Yes, it is. Cause the town did not wanna own the land if we weren't owning the building.
That's fine.
So in front of the, um, the library and the addition, is that all green space?
Yes, that was a grass area in a, um, new bus shelter.
Okay, so then for someone, I'm gonna go back to the accessibility. Someone who parks over there has to go all the way down that walkway to the front of Washington Street to get into the bill, the Lot 3 building?
Where's the entrance? You mean the entrance to the old library? Is that what you're looking for?
I'm trying to get into Lot 3, the building on Lot 3. So they've gotta, they've gotta walk from or use a wheelchair from that handicap spot there.
Wheelchair down the sidewalk and there's a sidewalk that cuts across right in front of the library and goes right up to the Blue Heart Tavern.
Yeah, it's inconvenient, but that's what they...
Is that, is that a sidewalk there? I can't see it from here.
Yeah, it's a sidewalk.
So I think it's about 50 feet from the, um, so this is, it's 50 feet, 45 feet from the street to the back of Lot 3. So to those handicap spaces would be about 100, about 100 feet total between those handicap spaces and the street. So you're looking at maximum about 200 feet to wheel down and over.
Yes, I mean, I think one of the hardest parts of the restoration for the Blue Heart Tavern, um, during the planning board's review had looked at other options of having it a, a rest on or expanding it was the needed upgrades to make it a, um, public space. So I, I think, um, what it had been used as previously was a small, a very small office, a builder's office, so it was... it wasn't...
You'd run a restaurant out of there.
But that's all going to be part of their application until we have it.
But that will be part of... Yeah, so that's what myself and the building department will review when we review plans for the restoration of the Blue Heart Tavern.
So usually, what we do is we would move to accept or to approve. Since approval's not required, but we would... We agree that it meets the requirements of not being requiring to be approved.
Yeah, not requiring a subdivision approval under the subdivision control law.
Right.
So I'll make a motion that we find Nine School Street, Two Ninety-One through Nine... Two Ninety-Five, Two Seventy-Seven through Two Eighty-Three, and Two Seventy-Seven A Washington Street does not require approval.
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion? Have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Any abstentions? And it's approved. All right.
So if you'll sign with the Sharpie for the Mylar copy, and then the paper copies, you can use a regular pen if you'd like. This one's on top.
Sharpie's on the...
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Oops. Yeah, I just don't know so I could see that one easier.
Sharpie here, right?
I think we should just leave them as be and we'll just come by itself.
Just flip them over.
Okay.
Move Mohammed, not Mohammed.
Exactly.
It seems sometimes we... It seems like we have many things to add.
Should be four, four paper copies.
Have we discussed what the clarification is? Or just that... How's it running going?
I'm getting close to my goal.
This is for the year?
Yeah, I think I'm at about nine hundred and sixty miles for the year. Or nine... I need... I know I need like about sixty more, so it must be nine forty.
Where do we have where one piece of... Doesn't this only follow the property line?
All right, so...
Straight line.
Abby, do you know what happened in terms of the selectmen's meetings? They opened the warrant. Is there any sort of an intro you're going to give us or...
I believe last night the selectman opened the warrant. I'm sorry, I wasn't here today. So I didn't get to follow up, but I believe they were planning to open the warrant last night, the Board of Selectmen, and they'll usually close it their first meeting in January, which is January seventh. So we should start talking about zoning amendments and be prepared for... At your next meeting on December eleventh, I think you should be ready to vote to submit articles. That way, I could have them submitted in time for the warrant in January because I think your first meeting will be after the Board of Selectmen's on January eighth. So they can be placeholders. Usually, the selectmen, they ask for, you know, a list of articles with, you know, title and summary of the changes. And then it's reviewed, then it's forwarded to the Finance and Warrant Commission, and then you'll schedule a public hearing, which you usually have at your second meeting in February. So that's when you'll need to have your full zoning language is usually a month before that. So usually, by the end of January, you'll have your... The zoning lang... You should have the draft zoning language and available for inspection and in the newspaper. And then the Finance and Warrant Commission, they hold their public hearings in March, and then town meeting is scheduled for May sixth. So right now, we should at least think about what articles. And then at your next meeting on December eleventh, at least be ready to get them on the warrant.
So what I would suggest here is we went through this exercise last year. We went through a lot of these. And so the key thing is that at our next meeting, that's when we would need to introduce anything that's not already on the table here. So I think if anybody wants to bring something forward, then they would need to know that December eleventh will be the last chance to get it on the agenda, right?
At least for you, or yes, at least it's for you as the planning board, because you won't meet again until after the warrant closes. Others, citizen petitions or other articles will be accepted until they close on January seventh. You as a group...
Right, but like the best way, if there was some burning issue out there that needed to action on, then I'd say at the next planning board meeting, that'd be a good time for a board member to come in with that, because otherwise, it'll be... The selectmen will close the warrant and then it'll have to go to a petition article. So that would...
Yes.
That's my first thought, is that if there are... If anybody has ideas for things that aren't here, to come to the next meeting with a proposal. The second thought I have is that the first three articles are the ones that we are refiling that were passed by town meeting, but because of the procedural defect, they didn't go through. So I would suggest that we don't need to discuss those tonight, that we could go through those at the next... When we formally start the hearing process. They've already been through all that. So we should just then go, unless anyone wants to talk about those three, we could go to the rest of the ones on here. And Abby, you could briefly summarize them, and we could have any concerns or questions people have, but probably not a debate about them yet, because we'll have to do that when we start the full hearing process. But kind of this would be a good chance to raise questions that if there's stuff that you could provide for our next meeting background in between, you know, like why do we need to do, you know, what are the... If people have questions. So I think we should skip the first three.
Okay.
And just start with you. Tell us quickly what Article Four is.
So this is the draft list that we had submitted for the fall town meeting. So the fourth one, this was to clarify how lots that are in more than one zoning district are handled. There's a section, Section 3.5 right now, that's lots in two districts, and it references kind of a vague term. It says... Hold on, I don't have the full... I didn't fill... It says, if a lot is in more than one zoning district, it can go over the zoning boundary line into the more restrictive zone. But it doesn't say, specify what the more restrictive zone is. Generally, residential is more restrictive than commercial. But then the question has sometimes come up when you have multiple residential districts. So single-family residence C next to a single-family residence D is which one's more restrictive. So that's why that one had come up before. Article Five, we had talked about the height of a perimeter fence, increasing that from right now, it's by right, up to six feet. So we talked about considering if you wanted to raise that to seven feet. So that would mean someone could install a seven-foot fence without going to the zoning board. But then you would want to check on that section on the zoning board, because right now, if it's six to eight feet, that needs a special permit. So we would have to change... Look at that section, change it to seven, I guess, seven to eight.
Instead of six, date it seventy. Everything is the same except for that.
Look at that.
Does anyone have any concerns with that, or is... I'm just going to get...
Who brought this to us?
This was suggested by the building commissioner because...
Conservation Commission, they sometimes they'll raise the fence six inches for critters to get through.
So they're entrapped in the problem.
Yeah, so that has come up before, is the way it's defined that triggers a special permit is from the ground to the top of the fence, and then...
These fences are already built at six feet.
Usually, they're in the six-feet panel, so if you raise...
It's a huge deal to make them five and a half, and then raise it six. I believe that's the origin of it.
Yeah.
Seems reasonable.
And then number... Article Six, we only briefly talked about a common application with the zoning board of appeals is this... It's in our accessory use table, that if you have on private properties, registered vehicles or storage areas for four or more vehicles requires a special permit. But it's not clear. It says four or more... The vehicle parking and storage of more than four registered vehicles on a residential property requires a special permit with the zoning board of appeals. And the question has come up is if you have just four cars parked in a driveway, does that trigger a special permit from the zoning board? And the way it's written, right now, it does. So it's a little bit unclear. But a common application with the zoning board is when there's a garage proposed for three or more vehicles, then that goes to special permit with the zoning board. But then there's a little bit of a gray area, is just if you have a driveway area that could support that many cars. It's not clear.
Families grow up and the kids get older. Pretty soon, you get six cars.
That's a gray area of time.
Right, so I think...
Like ten years, sixteen to twenty-six.
I think at the next meeting, we should look at that a little bit closer to see if you want to clarify it's the size of a garage or what that trigger is. Because the way it's written right now, it says parking or storage of vehicles.
Well, can we separate the two?
Yes, you can.
I think it would be best to separate the two. And anything over a three-car garage needs a special permit.
Yes.
Regardless of the size, four or more, regardless of the size, four or more bays needs a special permit. And take out the parking on the property completely out of it.
Yes, that's a... That was one of the suggestions the building commissioner had also thought, too, is that's... The way he interprets it was the intent, but we should clarify that going forward, because it's not clear.
I agree. All right.
Because you also, I think, part of the... You're trying to also prevent a junkyard situation.
Right, so we might just want to look at that language more of storage of vehicles.
Right, but then that comes with unregistered vehicles, and that's a whole other series of landmines.
We do have a different section on registered vehicles, but this is...
That makes sense.
It just says parking of vehicles, so we should just look at that language a little bit more closely.
So if someone's constructing a new home, large home, and you want to build a four-car garage, they go to the building department, they get their permit to build the building, and then they have to go to zoning to get a special permit for the four-car garage.
Yes.
But they wouldn't for a three-car.
Right.
Is that how it's written now, or is that how it was supposed to be written?
More than three. Right now, let me just really quick check. The exact language is four, three... Right now, it reads, "Private garage and/or the parking or storage area of more than three vehicles."
So it's gray.
So it's just saying more than three.
Storage area is the big problem, right?
Right. You could have a single-bay garage that's big enough, and you could have six cars in it.
I have a big storage area in front of my house. It's got grass on it, but...
So this is what's... You know, we should look at strengthening that of what the intent... Looking at what the intent is and making that more clear in the bylaw.
That's more about... It's a definitional clarifying article.
And then the next one, number seven, it's been, I guess, a year and a half now since we had made some changes to the nonconforming use in structures section. And I believe there is still some language that the building commissioner, as he was starting to review permits, that was a little bit... A little bit open-ended, too, in that he had made suggested changes. So I think we should... I forget what they all were... Are right now, but I will look at that and get you that full section for your next meeting.
So he's fine with our intent, but he wants to clean up the language so it's clear?
Yes.
And if you mentioned any examples of that, can you bring that back to us? I'd be curious of that.
Yes, examples. Yeah, there was something. The next one, Article Eight, was changes to the project area footnote in the FMUOD, flexible multi-use overlay. I think you had talked about when to count the project area for one project at a time. I mean, that it can't be counted more than once, reused more than once. So I don't think we came up with language for that, but to look at that, to clarify this.
As I understand, it can't be used more than once now.
Well, it doesn't say that, though.
No, but by definition, that's the special... Part of that special permit. So for example, in the Islington area, that developer couldn't use that address to then develop across the street, because that address is part and parcel to that special permit. You'd have to tear down that building instead and then use that to jump across the street if he were to buy Roach Brothers, say, or something like that.
Why would he have to tear down the building, though?
Because that's exhausted.
It's used for that special permit. Without that, there is no special permit. So that and that special permit is this new development. He'd have to tear down this development to use that address again, under a special... Under a new FMUOD special permit. He wouldn't be allowed to do it, because that address is tied to this. That's how this was developed.
I think the concern would be that, why would he have to tear it down? I mean, he's not having to tear things down right now.
Because you can't use it again.
You can't go left or right. If you go left...
Because it goes there.
It stays there.
Can't use it again.
You can't use the middle one to go right now.
But if it's a new project, let's say that this gets completely done, and then fifty years from now, they had that little piece of the Blue Heart Tavern that was... Suppose that are given to the town. They're going to bring that in and redo a new project in fifty years that includes that little corner. Are you saying that that little corner is forever landlocked unless they raise everything else? I think you make a case that we would waive that in or something.
Well, then, how... I mean, it's not then contiguous. It's not even separated. It's separated by two lots, Lot One, Lot Two, School Street.
I'm saying, if you combined maybe Lot Two and Lot Three, you know?
I really... I think messing with this is not necessary. I understand why people didn't like it, but this is something that's standard practice throughout the Commonwealth, that it's used all the time. This is just the only time it was used in Westwood under an FMUOD. But the principle behind it is how Stagecoach Plaza was developed. It's how the Shell gas station was developed. The fact that it's just written in is the result of that lawsuit down at University Ave. And if we take this out, that guy in University Ave is going to file a lawsuit again. We're going to make our town spend money to defend that lawsuit.
No, it's what it's... I would consider this more of a, what do we call it, for other, a housekeeping item, where we're just clarifying that we're stating what you're saying is obvious and putting it... Putting the ink on the paper, saying that you can't reuse it in another one. That's just how I see it. I don't see... We're not asking to change the way that something's being used. It's just more that you wouldn't use it again.
I really... I think you're fixing something that's not broken, just because the perception is we don't... We're fearful of what could happen, but it can't happen. So there's no need to protect yourself against it.
I think there's... I see two different things. I see that the footnote issue as... That footnote as being not binding and all that. But I think the other... The bigger issue is this, what... Is there a concern that a project could be... Could grow later? You know, that's... And I don't know if that's accomplished through a footnote, or if it's exactly what. But that feels like the thing that's concerning, is that you could have approved something, and then, once that's approved, it creeps over. And so that's, I think, that's the...
You mean like the FMUOD zone? It's already laid out the zone. It's, it's already laid out the zone?
No, 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 no. No, so the idea is this, so, so Islington Pizza was brought into that project, and the way that it was brought in was that it was used, the, it had a facelift. That's essentially what happened to Islington Pizza. So then another application comes in where a project across the street wants to do something, and then they, they use, let's, that property across the street that was already used in this type of function.
And like Chris says, it's already tied up into the other special permit that they were saying.
It's not floating around out there.
Right. It's can't be used anymore. That's part of that special permit.
Why can it not be used again?
Because it's exhausted, it's already used across the street.
It's forever linked.
It's forever linked to that.
To Cafe Diva Lot.
But what if, and then if you, but if you sold the two properties, so now they're owned by different individuals, you're saying that they can't then create a special permit?
Those buildings only exist because you linked them together, and you can't, you can't decouple them. Yeah, the chain can't be broken.
I don't, I don't think that's completely true.
Well, it would need to go back to the planning board for an amendment of the special permit.
Exactly.
And who is the, the planning board, the planning department is who has all these records?
Right, so if there were a change to a previously approved special permit, then that would need to go back to the planning board for a full public hearing and a new special permit.
Right, I mean, wouldn't we have modifications like that potentially? Again, it's not just going to happen, it would be someone comes in and says, we want to do, whatever's been built there now, it's, it's not as successful as we'd hoped or something, or we know some, we want to add a property across the street and then reconfigure things. That could come in as a revision to the special permit that expands the area a little bit.
And like everything else in the FMUOD, we are the gatekeepers.
Why would we approve such a thing? It's not a by right thing. They can't just put that up if they're looking for a special permit, so this board...
But you just, you just said that you can't use it again, but then you say, oh, they'll come back and we're the gatekeeper.
We are, well, look, like I said, when you take one building and you couple it with another to form the project and to get what you need in, you now marry those two buildings together. You cannot, ten years, twenty years, fifty years down the road, say, okay, now I'm going to use this whole project and add it with this one to get what I need. You can't do it. This is tied up forever in that special permit.
So you've said that this is something you've always done, use contiguous lots, but now we put it in there.
We put it in there just to satisfy a lawsuit. To make that guy feel comfortable that he'll be forever able to do this. It was, it, all it did was put in, in words what has always been in practice, to satisfy this guy so that he would back off on the lawsuit against the town.
So this would be the same thing, just putting in two words, which is always going to be in practice?
If, fifty years from now, someone comes and tries to do what Dave laid out, the only, the only way it could happen is, if we didn't write anything, is if everyone totally forgot that it had already been used. Okay? Either way, that's what would have to happen. That someone, the planning department would entirely forget that that address was used as a special permit.
It would never be any easier.
But that would also negate the need for this, because no one would ever remember that it had been used once.
Well, maybe it would make more sense if we add a definition for project area in definition section and section two for the whole zoning.
So I think, I think it's worth taking this out to come up with some clarification, because, I mean, the other items here were not contentiously, there's like, it wasn't, there's not a lot of confusion about, I mean, there were small confusions, oh, storage area versus garage, okay, that's pretty easy, but on this one, yeah, we're saying, you know, experts are saying it could never happen, but a lot of people worry that it could. So is, is there some way to address that? Is there some way to, whether it's a footnote or a definitional thing or something, to make it clear that what you're saying, that's, that's how it is? And that it's worth, if we settle a lawsuit with one guy, it's worth putting something in the bylaws that clarifies things for the rest of the town? You know, if it makes people understand and feel secure that what we're saying, that these special permits are really locking things in, then it's worth doing.
I could look at a definitions for project area, so maybe it would be, if we had a definition of project area that could be added to a footnote and/or at the beginning of the zoning bylaw.
What does it say right now, project area?
Only the foot, so we have the footnote in this section, it says, minimum project area shall include contiguous parcels and parcels separated by roadway or railroad right-of-way that are effectively contiguous. And I think we had drafted that based on other areas in the bylaw, I think it was our opens, the open space residential section of the bylaw, something similar, but we don't have a definition in our definition section in section two. So we could look at...
Our proposal is to...
We could maybe add a definition.
A definition of project...
Project area.
Area.
Because we have...
Is that what that is?
Yeah.
Yes, but it's only a footnote in this section, so it's not anywhere else.
Put it somewhere else.
So we're going to put in a maximum and a minimum?
No, defining what a project area is in section two, and then that way, if project area comes up anywhere in the zoning bylaw, it's in the definitions in section two. Because we do have lot area, frontage, height, those are defined in our definition section, but not project area.
It would be nice if you could get rid of the, of all the footnotes that are confusing and, and replace it with a definition that's not confusing anymore, I think. Because the footnote, it's like, it's there, but it doesn't mean anything, but then it does, and so it makes people, it causes problems. I think it's project area definition would be a good way to address that.
Okay. The next one was about, there was a suggestion for accessory apartments in section eight point five to add language for restricting that to family members only. Right now, we do not have that restriction. Generally, I would not recommend that, but it was suggested in the fall. So think, think about that, or, I'm sorry, I'm looking at Brian because he suggested it.
Oh, no, I just wonder, how many, what do we have for the accessory apartment total now?
I don't remember. I'll have to check with the, the total. We've gotten a few since spring 2017 when it was...
Twenty nine? We read a hundred a couple of years ago.
That's when we added...
I don't think it was a hundred, we had one percent.
We went up to a hundred and eighty.
When we increased it to two percent. Now, I don't remember how many...
I thought it was going from ninety to a hundred and eighty.
That was just the cap that we allowed. We didn't have that many, I think it was, I thought it was around fifty at the time, wasn't it?
No, I thought we were maxed out at ninety.
Was it ninety? Oh, maybe it was, okay, I can't remember.
It could have been, and we were going to ninety.
How many housing units are there in town?
Yeah, that's it.
More than you think, because we just don't see.
Six hundred, yeah? Right, no, I'm joking.
All right, but that's...
But we're just talking now of restricting any of those to family members only.
Right. We've never had that language in before, in the zoning. However, I think back in the early nineties, when we started getting these special permits, sometime the zoning board used to add that as a condition, not in the zoning, but as a condition of the special permit. However, at the advice of staff and town council, that was, that practice had, had stopped. Most applicants have their family members living in there, but we were not having that requirement.
And it gets, it gets back to that sort of, what's the, what's the message? Like, when people are trying to promote accessory apartments, they call them in-law apartments, and then when they're trying, when people say, wait a minute, I was trying, you mean I can't, I have to have a relative in this place? Oh, no, it's, so I think it's, I'm not, I'm not really a fan of this limitation, I think, but...
I'm not at all. I don't know where you stop the family line.
I think it's...
How far out is it? It just, you're opening a can of worms. I know the intention, but I, I just, I don't think that's our, our town's business of who lives in our house.
But with accessory apartments, you've got two housing units, basically. So is that then considered a two-family per se?
We consider them one-family still, because they're accessories. That's why we have the, the size restriction and the requirement on the design to make it look like a single family. That was, that's important for the special permit that the zoning board reviewed, so we consider them single families, one-family.
Same address?
It's like an A, I think it has a different number.
I think usually...
It's a different number?
I think they'll, a lot of times when they're in their house, I think that is the same number, or it might be like an A.
Well, you need a separate entrance.
Yep, they need to have a separate entrance. Some of them, there's some that are, might be in like a carriage house or a garage, those might have a different address.
I've seen some with, I don't know if it's for all.
Maybe this is a question for Sarah, is it, who charted us the housing?
Yes.
Are they considered two separate housing units, though, in our inventory?
That's a question we've had, that we, yeah, that's because I don't think we have, there is no clear answer. That's the thing.
Well, if it was a non-family member, it would be...
It goes to the census.
So I think that's a, that would be a good one to bring back for, that is one of the pieces of data that we need to know, like, do these accessory apartments count as additional units for the denominator?
Well, that's, the reason there's no answer yet is because we don't know.
Because I've heard that they...
The state doesn't know?
I don't think anyone knows. I mean, you can check in, back in two thousand, and check the census, look in the census from two thousand and ten, and you'll have to try to figure out which units are counted.
I would think they would.
They don't have that all information on who reported.
Dwelling unit, someone can live there.
Yeah, the, for a building code, it's considered its own separate, you know, it's a residential unit on its own, but it's still a single family, because it's accessory to the single family.
Can we ask Sarah to investigate that for us? Would she be the best person?
No, I'm telling you, no one really knows the answer. That's the thing, it's, it's...
The state hasn't decided.
Well, no, it's not a state decision, it's, the census, it's federal census, it all depends how the information was reported to them. I believe they ask, you know, about population, so it depends on how their responses were answered by the census, right? It's how, it's reported through the town clerk.
Is there a list of the houses that count on the inventory, or is it just a number that comes back? Do we know, like, if we know there's four thousand, do we have a list?
For our purposes, we only care about how it relates to our...
But the town of Westwood has a list of the accessory apartments that they've approved permits for.
I think our understanding was in the past that they were not, they were not included as separate units.
Previously.
Previously, but we weren't sure about two thousand and twenty.
We won't know until two thousand and twenty, is that?
Yeah, I don't even know that.
Yeah, I guess, I don't... That was our understanding, but you, I think we would have to really dig into what exactly was reported to the census back in two thousand and ten.
You're right, it wasn't before, it wasn't, and we don't know what it's going to be next year.
It probably depend, it probably depends on the addresses and how...
Yeah, I think it's an address.
Right, don't you usually get...
It would come to each address.
Yeah, so I think it usually comes...
Regardless, I think the housing, when they, as they come up with a housing production plan, this is probably going to be an element of that. Some stra, part of the strategy is to either encourage, is to encourage more accessory apartments, and I mean, that's likely to be...
Well, that came up last week, yeah.
So, you know, I just, it's, we should be thinking about if we, you know, how this fits in with that, but I don't, I don't know if that's, I, so I just don't, do we have, is there a strong desire to, to proceed with this? I guess we want to get more information.
Well, on, it's just on this basis, because the question is, we want to limit the apartments to family members, which has nothing to do with whether they're counting it towards the census or not.
Yeah.
I don't believe we should be limiting any of these things to, you know, who are we to limit, I mean, they want to open up an accessory apartment in their home.
I mean, there are accessory apartments in town we don't even know about.
Exactly.
If we can't keep track of physical dwellings, how are we going to keep track of whether it's a family member, or if, if it's your grown son's girlfriend? Not family, but clearly a close member of the, or someone close to the family. I, I just, I just don't think it's, anything we can sink our teeth into, as a town.
My position on this is that, I agree, Dave, that, I don't want to limit this to family members, but if we're concerned about a forty B in town, because we're within decimal places of falling under that ten percent, then this will increase the units.
So, so in the... So we don't know that.
Right.
We don't, it doesn't...
We don't know that it's going to increase the units, and we don't know if the units will be counted.
And there may also be legislation coming down in the next couple of years that removes this type of restriction anyway. So, I mean, that's, that's something that's going to come, so, I mean, I don't, I'm fine with drawing this.
But I just think for our purposes, I don't feel there's any appetite here to restrict to family members accessory apartments. Am I right?
Yeah.
That's the question at hand, so we don't, we'll take that off.
Do you want me to take it off? Does everyone want me to take it off for now?
Yeah, we'd be okay taking it off.
Okay. And then the last suggestion in the fall was about which direction the finished side of the fence. Shall we take that off, Brian? Okay. Okay, so we lost it. Okay.
But you know what? Down the road, someone's going to turn...
So we might have more, so...
Get the bad side of the fence towards me, and I'm going to see. We had a chance.
It's all right.
Most people, most people do put the finished side facing out, but not all.
I've seen a number of examples where it happened. It's, it's usually the, the builder coming in, building it, and they don't have to deal with the neighbor giving them the stink eye, so they do it.
The owner is not home, it gets up and guy's gone, you're like, oh, no.
No, but the builder doesn't have to live there.
I know, that's what I mean. He comes in, puts it up while the owner's gone, and then...
Well, they put it up when they're there, they don't care. That's, that's my, the point of it.
No, but the owner is not even there to instruct them, make sure the privacy or the good side goes to my neighbor as a courtesy.
So do we want to, is, are there other towns that have done this? Do we want to be a town that says all fences must be...
I personally don't even consider this another town.
I don't think it's that common to have that in the zoning. I, I've worked in four towns and I haven't seen it in the zoning bylaw, so it's usually this...
It's kind of a common sense, though, you know?
Yeah, common courtesy.
Common courtesy, common sense.
Until, until somebody done it, right?
Oh, it's already been done.
Yeah, it's been done a million times.
But I don't think it's our town's place to come in and stick our nose between two neighbors.
Gets into people's business.
So we might have more, so come, or let me know in advance if you have any, send it to me, and then we can talk about it. If you have any draft later, then we can talk about it December eleventh.
Do we have a consensus on the fences? I mean, are we going to keep that or not? I'd like to get it out.
Get rid of it? Okay, take it off, okay.
Knock the fence down.
So I will take another look at my list. I keep some, and I'll check in with the building inspector if it is any more, so if you have any more, bring for the next meeting on December eleventh.
All right, that is zoning amendments, I think. Comprehensive plan.
Yes, so, so we're just getting started.
What are we signing?
The committee met for the first meeting last week on Monday, the nineteenth, before Thanksgiving, so they had their first meeting, it was really kind of a meet and greet in logistics, they reviewed the work plan, I will get you, I'll email you out the contact list. I had put together a contact list of the steering committee members, and then I had given them your contact, but I wanted to just take another look at the resource list, because I was trying to list out other boards and committees that they might like to outreach to, so they asked me, so I had some homework for the, that I have to get back to them on about other boards and committees that they might like to meet, they wanted to look at some other master plans, and then some kind of best, best master plan. So I have some homework that I have to do. So right now, they don't have another meeting scheduled. Next on the comprehensive plan, a scope is a survey, so they, their homework was to[1740.31] So they, their homework was to start thinking about survey questions for their sections. I've received a few. And then, you know, after tonight, I'm going to start working on a survey that ideally we'd like to have open early December all the way till the vision session, which I'd like to have a vision session in late January, early February. First, need to get a consultant. So I don't know, we don't know the exact date yet, but the, um, steering committee thought a Saturday morning, or a Saturday, um, morning in the winter would be the best timeframe. That's what we had done in the past, try to not interfere with, um, work. So we'd have to, we don't know yet for the consultant. For a town-wide vision session, but this is one we'd really want to get as many people to come to as possible. So we would need to know well in advance to be able to get the word out and promote it and get people to come and look at scheduling of events.
I'm just wondering, like, weekend versus weekend, weeknight for a comprehensive plan. I don't, I don't know if it's going to change dramatically the, the attendance.
Yeah, I, well, sure. We did in the, in the last couple of rounds, I think we did do it on a Saturday. So the committee did, I think that was again most sensitive.
The Islington one, a lot of people. The open space and recreation was on a weeknight and that was well attended.
The more recent ones we've had, well, we had the housing, so we had the housing vision session la-, um, on the 13th. So we didn't have too many people there. That was on a Tuesday night. We had open space on a Thursday night. And then we had one in Islington a couple of years ago. I think that was maybe a Wednesday night.
The, the steering committee said Saturday.
They said they're, they thought it was Saturday.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah, so they thought it was Saturday.
Yeah, that's, that's their deal.
So there's three, three weeks in that timeframe. The weekend of the, so 26th, the second, or the ninth. Prior to that, you're at MLK weekend, a lot of people gone, um, long weekend for schools. And then the weekend after that is president's weekend.
Right, so we, we wouldn't, we would have to look, we wouldn't schedule anything during like school vacation weeks.
Just, see, you got three weeks to choose from in that timeframe. Three weekends to choose from.
Pressure's on.
The ninth is the one.
The ninth is the last one.
That'd be the one probably with the best attendance. That's the one without a holiday.
Okay, yeah. And I think the open space one was February 1st last year. So that was getting, and we had a good-
February 2nd is Groundhog Day and people have to-
So what else about comprehensive plans? So I'm still working on the website. That needs some updating. Trying to get some shorter, um, links. Um, so I got to make some updates to the, uh, website. Steering committee members, um, they'll be reaching out, um, to prospective groups. So I've, I will do, you know, work with them to that if they're going to another board or committee meeting to let me know so that, and their staff, so get those posted, um, on their agendas and on the website about upcoming meetings and events so that people know.
One of the, um, suggestions at that meeting that I thought was good was, um, Charlie Donahue saying, try to coordinate things. Like if there's a board that's, uh, that overlaps multiple things, try to like have a meeting where say the conservation commission meets with, uh, with several subgroups that are relevant, like the land use and to open space maybe or something. You know, just try to get it so that it's not lots and lots of individual meetings.
Right, so-
And I would, I sent you an email earlier today that I was suggesting that the way you have like the planning board applications materials listed there, if we could log, um, all of these kinds of meetings and things that are planned for the comprehensive plan in one place, that would be a helpful log of like, you know, here's the meetings that are coming up, like when they're going to meet with different committees and all. Just have it all in one place and it kind of shows transparently like all the work they're doing along the way.
I'll be working with, I'll, I've reached out to and I will, again, I'd, following up from last week, um, the holiday. I haven't contacted everyone yet, but, um, all the, um, staff, revere's boards and committees to let them know that steering committee members will need to contact them to get on an agenda in advance. That way I can also get it posted to the calendar and on the comprehensive plan page. So I want to try to make a, like upcoming meetings, or upcoming meetings and events, um, section. So I still need to create that page.
Do you need us to reach out to our, um, in our liaison capacity? Do you want us to reach out to them and?
You can, or, or they can, or they'll probably reach out to you. I still have to get them, um, some more information. I was working on getting them, um, some updated data. I was hoping to have that before the first meeting. I just didn't get a chance to. So I, they're waiting for me to get some information. Their homework assignment was to survey questions, read the existing plan and then, um, work, review what I give them and, and start meeting with staff. And then I was gonna, um, working on getting them a schedule of other, um, relevant boards, committees and kind of a draft outline of, um, when other boards and committees meet.
Okay. Any, what other updates and miscellaneous things? Meeting schedule? You want to go?
I'm sorry. I was hoping to do the schedule for the whole year. I just didn't get to it. I'm sorry. But it's getting close now. Um, can we at least look at January and February? Since applications are due a month in advance for public hearings, so we need to get, people are starting to ask, like, looking ahead to January. January 8th, so we click January 8th and then I would suggest January 29th. Because Tuesday, January 22nd is the FinComs, um, meeting where the, it's an introduction of the warrant article. So usually myself and the, um, planning board chair goes to those and introduces the warrant article. So that's on a Tuesday, the 22nd. So I would suggest the 8th and the 29th.
And all of these will be here? Do we have any schedule, do you think, somewhere else?
As of right now here, if anything, if we get any applications that may draw a bigger crowd, then we look to have them somewhere else.
Okay. I didn't know if you just anticipated that.
Not yet. I don't know. Um, then I was thinking February 12th and 26th. Because the week of the 18th, that's school vacation week. Unless anyone can think of any other holidays. Um, wait a second. That's okay. Can we go with those, the 12th, February 12th and February 26th? Okay. All right. And then can I work on a draft, um, for the next meeting in December? I'll try to, I just generally try to avoid school vacation weeks and then you try to spread out your meetings every two weeks.
That would make March exactly the same as February, the 12th and 26th.
It always is. But in March, we might need more meetings because the last two years you've had snowstorms on Tuesday nights. So you've had to schedule a meeting. So-
We've missed a meeting?
That's just a crapshoot.
We just so happen to have blizzards the last two years.
Did we? Haven't we called and canceled any meetings last year or the year before?
Yeah, I remember.
We luckily had backup dates. Because it, March is a busy time because you also have, um, that's when the FinComs public hearings are. And just getting ready for town meeting. Yeah, so I, that's why I do need to look at, um, FinCom's schedule to make sure they don't conflict. So that's kind of the hard part is because they often meet on Tuesdays. So-
Okay, they'll meet on the 5th and the 19th. That would be perfect. All right, so we'll just do February?
Yes.
February.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Abby.
Thank you.
And let's see, anything? Anything else? Anything exciting?
The only thing is, I had gone to a conference recently and they had a suggestion to have your meeting procedures available for people to see. Um, I know Dave reads them at the beginning of the meeting, but I thought maybe I could put it on the front door and then maybe I thought on the back of the agenda. If anyone had a chance to review it. I took it from what Dave said, but I, I think I took out a few things that maybe just didn't seem to make, um-
There was something I stumbled across as I did. I actually read off of this. So, um, I think it's, there's a place where there's maybe at the four lines up from the bottom. It's just, you could, we could just read through it. It's content wise, it's fine.
Okay. So it's really reminding people that the meeting is, um, video recorded in case anyone came in late to know that they're on, they're on camera, turn off the cell phones, that, um, everyone, um, is speaking to them, uh, microphone and given an opportunity to talk. Now, I, I know what I did change in here. It says, um, items not requiring a public hearing, the opportunity for public comment will be at the discretion of the board. Usually you always ask for public comment, but I, I didn't-
Yeah, I kind of, when, as I was reading that, I thought, uh, but-
Unless, I wasn't sure when I was drafting if you wanted to say everyone get a chance to speak. But then I thought, what if something's not on the agenda and then someone wants to speak? Do you want to have it in writing?
I don't, I mean, if someone objects, we're going to let them speak. So unless they're, you know, insane or something.
I like the way it's written. It's at discretion. If it's not a public hearing, it's at the board's discretion.
The intent was if someone, um, came in late and maybe even after a public hearing started, you'd want them to know that you are going to open up to public comment. But then when I was kind of drafting it, I wasn't sure if you'd want to say everyone will have a chance to speak. You know, if it's something that's not on the agenda, I don't, it's at your discretion. It is.
I think it's fine with the way it is there.
I agree.
Okay. And, you know, I, I think in, in what Dave has at the beginning and then I think what I give you kind of in your, at least for new board members, you kind of try to keep to a timeframe, but that really depends on the, um, application, the complexity of the application and what it is. So I didn't want to put any times in here in case you go over that. Then, then people could be, you know, assuming that some, you know, a item later on the agenda could be done more quickly. So I, I opted for leaving-